At minus 200, minus 400, I have to wear the glasses again. And maybe it would be fine if that's where the injury stopped. But I have a hole the size of a nickel in the septum between my two nostrils that constantly fills with blood scabs that I need to blow out in order to breathe because they're so thick and encrusted. Nasal skin will not grow there. I also have had infected sores in my ears for ten and a half months. I could not stand the excruciating pain. And monthly doctors would tell me it must have been remedied already. Well, I brought my own wooden handled cotton swab with me and the doctor looked inside at the outside wall inside my ear and explained, "It's full of sores and they're all infected." What was, what was the end of, was that the end of it? No. My hearing was tested immediately after the electrocution and I need $3,000 hearing aids. I can't afford. The cartilage in both my knees was cut when I was electrocuted. They did surgery on one knee and they said they'd do the other knee as soon as the other one was straightened out. It never did straighten out. And I regularly get shots in both knees. Now, you might think losing height is no big deal, but picture yourself with the same weight, having lost all your muscle tone in your pectoral muscles, your back muscles, your butt muscles, and your abdominal muscles, dropped and weak, except that you're five inches shorter. Having had Tourette's syndrome, I had great muscle tone. My pectoral muscles could hold up my H cup with no problem. Now, without help, they're down to my waist and very uncomfortable on my stomach skin. So forget comfortable loungewear or pajamas. I need surgery. And my seat used to be very thin, but now it bumps into things. My abdomen is in front of my legs and that's huge. Know why? Because you, I can, have not been able to go to the bathroom correctly since I was electrocuted. I found out a month ago with correct tests that my colon is too long for my body or that I'm too short for my colon. Because I didn't have insurance right away, I thought it might be the stomach problem with my viral infection, but that was ruled out with the barium and elliptical test. Finally, last year, I was able to get a colonoscopy and the doctor said it was normal, but I knew it wasn't normal. So this year with Medicare, I was finally referred to colon and rectal surgery. I was sent to the pelvic floor doctor and they found, and they found to accommodate my shorter size, my colon is like a telescope with things getting caught in it. So I need a rectocele surgery. And my colon has not fit my abdomen since it got shorter. It curved itself to fit by leaning up against the vaginal wall and stretching that so thin that I have to have a biologic cell mesh placed on that wall with, so that, with the two areas, so that the two areas will stay separate. It's not an option to not do it. It's only a matter of when.
How much longer, ma'am? Pretty quick?
Yeah, I'll keep going here.
Okay, keep it rolling.
Okay? Let me see if I, I have a hard time, tricky time somewhere.
I don't want to interrupt you, but...
Since I can't exercise very long or very hard or be on my feet, it's very tricky. I need surgery on my abdomen. My skin was smooth like glass, like my mom, my mom's 90, without any wrinkles, and I expected to look like her. Now, my skin is just dragging, ugly, and burned. And even with all the lotion and medication galore that I have to use, the Kleenexes, everything, it just cost a mint. It's never been and never will be the same. Judge Lack repeated a number of times that he wasn't making a ruling based on the merits of the case, only based on the timing of the filing, which is written for two different deadlines in the Wisconsin statutes, without there being references one to the other from the 180-day municipality deadline to the 120-day municipality personal injury deadline. I still need to be pieced back together through surgeries and hearing aids, and I use about 60 medications a month, a day during the month. And I missed Medicaid, cut off by $5. I wanted to give them back to them, but they wouldn't take it. You know, don't you feel that some monetary responsibility for this sense, according to B&amp;B Electric, the city of Hudson was in noncompliance with the maintenance of the metal pullbox culvert? That was, that's a quote, that was put in, quote, "in approximately 25 years ago." So the B&amp;B Electric had to bond the ring, quote, "bond the ring and cover the existing pullbox," end quote. Also, in the words of B&amp;B Electric, fax 3509, "After inspecting and surveying the metal pullbox, we have concluded one of the existing conductors had worn through the insulation over the years. The bare conductor apparently touched the metal pullbox cover and energized it." Did, did any of you come to see me or ask how I was? Don't you care about the safety and dignity of the people? Don't you believe in bringing people justice? Looking at your budget for graders and new police cars, you'd never know that. At least I don't want $50,000 for being hot and embarrassed. I need $50,000 to help me with medical costs. The streetlight pole where I was injured has now been knocked down for a couple of weeks, and it has wires hanging out of it. Right now, I have a picture of it on my phone. Just think, if some child should touch it and die. Don't automatically assume a lawsuit is frivolous. And then I have the pictures of the two heights, tall and short, five inches difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, consent to generate...
To approve the regular common council meeting minutes of March 10th, 2014, to approve the issuance of eight regular operators licenses contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city for the period March 25th, 2014, to June 30th, 2015. Additional information is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the appointment of Phil Borget as an election inspector for the Republican Party for the term March 24th, 2014, through December 31st, 2015, including appointment as a special registration deputy or special voting deputy if needed after training has been successfully completed. To approve the Lesberg Memorial 5K Run Walk on Wednesday, May 21st, 2014, at 6:00 PM in Lakefront Park. To approve the EMS walk on Sunday, May 4th, 2014, beginning and ending at Hudson Middle School. To approve the Riverfront Run on Saturday, September 13th, 2014, beginning and ending at Riverfront Athletic Club. To approve the Homecoming Parade on Friday, September 26th, 2014, at 4:00 PM from Myrtle Street South on Second Street to Cooley Road, and for Chief Jensen to designate an alternate route should the need arise due to road construction impacting Second Street. To place and file the Utility Commission minutes of March 11th, 2014, the quarterly report of the EMS director, the monthly report of the finance officer, and the quarterly Public Works and Parks report. That is all.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Haku?
Yes.
Vanzo?
Yes.
Hoggit?
Yes.
T Winko?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Let me catch up here. Next item on the agenda, Finance Committee Discussion and Possible Action of Extension of EMS Billing Agreement between the City of Hudson and EMS Billing Associates LLC. It was approved in finance to extend our contract. Chief Eby is here if anyone has any questions. I found out it was about five years, four to five years ago, we switched billing. Been very happy with the billing so far.
I'll move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and possible action, purchase of 2015 one-ton chassis and truck box. Tom? Mr. Zulley? It's a one-ton truck with a chassis, with a truck box that you're going to get the dollars from existing, sale of existing old equipment and trucks.
We have currently about $22,000 in the sale of used equipment for public works, and we'd like to use a portion of that to pay for the utility portion of the truck.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve the bid from Luther Chevrolet for $37,377 for the truck and bed.
Second.
Did you include the $12,000 for the box, or do we want to...
That's part of the $37,377.
No, it's additional.
Oh, and an additional $12,000.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion.
Looks pretty straightforward.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is short-term parking. This is a contract that was sent to us for review, and Catherine has reviewed the contract.
It reflects what the council approved at the last council meeting.
I move for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Is there any discussion? Mr. Vanzlo?
I would just like to repeat what I said at the Finance Committee meeting, that I would prefer this contract to take the 40-cent transaction fee and charge the user. I do not believe the city should subsidize a convenience transaction for people who are unknown and probably most of them outside the city, not city residents. And I don't think we should be using city money to subsidize those transactions. There is no reason the user could not pay the entire 40 cents. And there is no reason in my mind why we should be paying for that transaction fee, a convenience transaction fee. I, I don't know why we're doing that. I don't have any clue. I don't have any clue why we do it. And there's no reason why the person who wants to utilize that convenience couldn't accept the 40 cent charge. I don't get it.
Do we know that for sure, that this company can't completely pass on not just the 25 cents, but the entire 40 cents? I mean, do we know that, or they need a client and that's us, or, I mean...
I don't know for certain. I thought he discussed that when it first came up, the 15-cent merchant transaction fee, and the council wasn't in favor of it.
See, I, I think, I think the city should be out of it altogether. It should be between Passport Parking and the user, and the city shouldn't be in part of it, other than allowing them to put stickers on our meters.
But they have to be part of it because they're collecting money from the...
The city doesn't have to be part of it.
No, I'm saying this company has to be.
Related to the credit transaction, maybe. I don't know.
But the credit charge is against Passport Parking. The city's not granting credit, Catherine. The city's not saying use a credit card. Passport Parking is, and generally, when you use a credit card, the person accepting the credit card pays the fee. There's no reason for us to be involved in this transaction. We, in my mind, we do not have to be part of this transaction, and we shouldn't be part of this transaction. It's simply between the user and Passport Parking, and we're giving Passport Parking the privilege of putting their service into the city of Hudson. That's what we're doing. And we shouldn't pay to give them the right to put this into the city of Hudson. They should be privileged to put it into the city of Hudson. I shouldn't pay them to put that service here. They should be glad that we're giving them the opportunity to put their service into the city. I don't know why I'm paying somebody to do that. I just don't.
Well, here it says Passport will pay for all stickers and signage for initial launch. The client is responsible for replacing any signage at cost. So to me, and not, I understand where you're coming from, Rich, and I guess I kind of agree. I also kind of disagree in that as a service to our community for a convenience transaction, I load up my wallet on my cellphone and then I can park at my leisure, but also accommodates other people coming. It's 15 cents transaction. So we got a little skin in the game to kind of keep invested, so make sure that the stickers are up to date and that we're, you know, continuing to support this. And I, I think we should put a little commitment into it, you know, but I don't know what the negotiation is on the transaction fee. I guess that's kind of where I'm at.
So, Rich, you're saying that, so let's assume that they can charge the entire 40 cents to the person who's coming to park. Their Passport Parking is also collecting that fee, though?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, you're saying they should collect that fee, charge the user completely, turn the money over to the city?
Give us our beater parking rates that we always get and just pay us, and they get the same amount of money. Passport Parking gets the same amount of money. The user pays for the convenience, and the city gets the same amount of money. And the city is basically out of the transaction.
Well, my assumption is then they will have to absorb that fee, which, having watched the finance on TV prior to coming down here, I was listening to Rich's reasoning, and it made more sense to me that, you know, Rich's concerns. We are not actually part of the transaction. The Parker is making an agreement with Passport, and that's to pay via their credit card. We're not the merchant in this. Passport is. So I, you know, everywhere else in the commercial world, the merchant pays the fee. And I believe that, my understanding of credit card law is that you can't pass on the fee.
Correct.
So...
Why we had to find an alternative for utility billing.
Yeah.
Because if we were going to charge the credit card fee, we could not turn around and pass that on to the customer.
Right. So I feel like Passport, as a merchant, is actually passing it on, just not to the customer, which isn't against the rules, how they're doing it. That's my understanding.
Yeah. Or are they saying the city is the merchant by allowing the credit card?
Well, nobody's credit card statement ever is going to show City of Hudson.
According to the contract I read, Catherine, I mean, they've identified the merchant as themselves, and we're the client.
Their processing fee covers...
I believe that's how it reads.
Well, it says the company.
Their processing fee covers keeping track, keeping track of our meters if they go down or not. It covers how many, who's parking where. We're able to have a better assessment as to what's happening in our downtown parking so we know exactly where, where we have heavy parking, where we're having lower parking levels. It does a lot more than just putting a sticker on a meter. I mean, they're taking, they're doing, they're doing inventory for us. They're doing, they're handling when, when things break down for us. There, it's not, we're in a situation where our, our regular meters aren't going to cut it very much longer. We need to start advancing somewhere. It's a lot less expensive to do it this way than to do the larger meters that cover 10 spots. And as far as subsidizing, we already do subsidize parts of the city, like the boat launch. We subsidize that. And not everybody uses it, but my tax dollars are paying for someone else to launch a boat.
But we, but we charge fees for those launches.
Yes, but we charge fees to park.
The city collects fees, right. And all I'm saying...
And we don't charge enough fees for those launches, in my opinion.
Passport Parking has identified a fee of 40 cents a transaction to take care of all of the things you've mentioned.
15 cents.
40 cents. 25 and 15, I believe.
25 goes to them, the user pays 25 and we pay 15.
We pay 15, so it's a 40 cent fee. They've identified a 40 cents fee. They need to do all of the things you said. All I'm saying is collect it from the user, don't have the city involved in it.
I understand what you're saying. I, I, and I think, I mean, in that retrospect, it makes sense, but what, I agree with Rich, well, not Rich, I agree with what you're saying, but what John is saying is also true. We need to, we're, is this, to give a, we're giving a convenience to tourists, we're giving a convenience to our, our, our residents with, with this type of parking, just like we're giving a convenience with the boat launch. I mean, we can look at that with many situations in our city, is how we are subsidizing certain things to help our residents and visitors.
I don't agree with the analysis of the boat launch. They pay a fee to launch their boats. $7, I believe, or $10. So to launch a boat, we charge them. In this case, we're paying for them to use this fee. I don't know why I'm paying somebody for a convenience. Why is the city of Hudson paying somebody to use a convenience that we make available because we have parking meters in the city of Hudson? If we didn't have parking meters here, this wouldn't, they wouldn't even be able to come here and propose this. So the only reason they're here is because the city maintains parking meters. We pay for them, we monitor them, we pay parking meters, parking officers to go by and give out tickets, monitor them. We, we pay all the expenses. Passport Parking isn't paying any of that. All they're going to do is pay the initial expense of putting a sticker on the meter. After that point in time, becomes the city's responsibility to maintain the stickers, maintain the meters, and do everything else so the cost is still borne by the city.
Actually, the cost is borne by the people who use the meters.
So the question is...
Because we pay for that with meter payments.
Isn't really the question that will Passport do a zero trans, zero cent transaction for us or not? And if we're, if we're getting the service and they're not going to give it to us for less than 15 percents per transaction, then to me, I still think it's worth it.
Well, all I want them to do is charge the user 40 cents. Don't charge the 25 cents, charge the user 40 cents.
So what we have tonight is, is a contract, and we approved it the last meeting, and if you guys want to change it or vote it down, we can discuss it for, now until the cows come home, but decide what you guys want to do. And I'm not trying to limit conversation if there's anybody else who wants to add anything.
I'm ready to vote.
Can I change my motion?
What was your motion?
I want a motion to approve, but maybe can I change, I would like to change it to postpone to the next meeting and have Catherine, or would it be one of us?
Well, we could contact. I think that question was asked, and he came back with this option. But certainly, we can just nail that down completely.
Are you withdrawing your motion?
I'd like to withdraw my motion. Yes.
Just procedurally, I think you need to be aware, the council did approve this. So if you're going to do something different, I think it should be postponed to be put on for reconsideration. So everyone has noticed that this is, because this is the contract that the council approved.
Right. That's what I would like to do, is postpone. So do I need to withdraw my motion first, or can I just change it?
Was it seconded?
Yes.
Yeah, withdraw.
So I need to make, I have to, I'd like to withdraw my motion. Okay? And I'd like to make a new motion that we postpone till the next meeting. And whether it's through Catherine or through the public safety, we find, I don't know who would make the call.
I think you should.
Okay, I'll make the call to Brandon and find out if they can absorb the 15 cent service fee that is being charged to the city and come back with that answer.
Have the user pay that.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's my new motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you.
I'll write that down.
I don't know if everyone, John, if you saw the finance meeting, we went through FOTH has given us a, they're, they're going to be not doing municipal work anymore.
Been on the plane, yeah.
Yep. As of June 30th, so we have a motion, or a possible, or for the city administrator to go out for, to write up a proposal for a new city adminis, or a new city, sorry, engineering firm.
He's giving himself a new job, surprise Devon.
A new city administrator, Devon? Were you aware of that?
Sorry about that.
So, what, what I'm looking for is that we've, we've done some, some preliminary things, but at this point, I don't think our city is big enough to have a, hire a full-time city engineer or have the staff that we would need to staff that up to handle the projects that we have coming forward.
And it was noted at Finance that both, any project that they're contracted with us so far, any of the projects, they will continue them till they're completed.
We have a list of those projects that we just, I just received today from Karen somewhere in this...
They will, they'll follow through on that. Anything they're contracted to do with us.
Anybody have any questions on that?
We did this three years ago, right?
I think it was three or four.
Three or four.
What I would do then, if you so choose, I would find what we did three, four years ago, get that to you at the next meeting so you have an opportunity to see. If you want to make changes to the RFP, there was a couple other items discussed that we'll include, and then at the next meeting, then you could approve, potentially approve a new RFP, and we could, you know, go from there.
Do we need to go out and re-recruit, or can we, can we...
Looking at, you mean re-recruit?
It's been long enough time that you would almost have to go out for another RFP. We wouldn't be able to hold them to what they had bid us the last time.
It's been three years.
Oh, yeah.
Three or four, yeah.
And I would just ask that Tom Zulley be involved in that process of putting the RFP together, just consulted with.
And I think Denny should be, too.
As well.
As well.
Probably Jim Schreiber, correct?
Okay.
So we need a motion?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to approve that the city administrator begin the process for recruiting a new engineering firm.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is discussion, possible action of engineering services on an interim basis during recruitment process for engineering firm. I think I panned out some, some issues or some, excuse me, some tasks for a part-time city engineer. This would be a contract position, not an employee. And I think we, if you can read through some of those, some of the capital improvement things, pavement, streets and pavement, management plan, utilities, stormwater utility, parks, miscellaneous city expenditures. One of the things that we've been talking about for probably two to three years that we haven't seemed to accomplish is a new assessment policy and to review and evaluate existing fees, fee utilities, fee schedules, utility user rates, and financing of public improvement projects. I think that would be something we could do. One of the things that we've talked about for probably five years or four years is trying to get our projects done a little, in a more timely, sooner in the year, not more timely, sooner in the year than September and October. I think this thing Lori pointed out in, in finance, that we can get a lot of the road tests, the soil samples, the street samples done. We have to have that done in August, September, so that we can go out for bids, get all that stuff done. And I think this person could handle that, make those things happen. I think it's an assistance, we had talked with Karen from FOTH about coming in and helping out a couple days a week, or one day a week, or 20, you know, one, four hours a day, once a week, to say if Denny has some issues or Tom had some issues, that, that person would be here to answer those questions or give assistance to either, either of these two people or anybody in the city. So that's what we're proposing, and in finance, they recommended that instead of full finance, that Rich and I, as president and mayor, would interview someone and bring a recommendation back to council and finance.
I think the cost reduction of it is significant. If we can pay somebody $60 to $70 an hour as opposed to $102 to $110 an hour, the potential for cost savings is out there for about $40 to $50 an hour in engineering services. For that reason, I, I like the idea to try it.
Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion for Mr. Vanzlo and I to go out and bring a recommendation back to you folks?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
There's a couple...
Yes.
Engineers that support public utilities that you might want to talk to Tim Caruso.
Absolutely.
That have been doing a good job on some of the projects already.
Sure.
The utility has a separate contract.
They have a different engineering.
Right.
I'm just saying there's a, one of, well, anyway, they have also people that you might consider to help, so.
Right. We're looking not as a firm, because that will be another process where we go out to hire a firm.
It could be an individual.
Okay. I will do that. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, 9A, discussion and possible action on traffic study issue at the 400 block of Orange Street. Mary? Marty's not here. I don't think he's here.
Nope, he's at another meeting.
Okay.
This came through public safety. Elder Person Hoggit had made a request to take a look at this issue, and basically, it seemed to be a blind, blind intersection corner, however you want to call it, coming from the alley out. And there was a concern about safety of children and individuals, and I believe at safety, we determined that it was you, Mr. Mayor, who came up with the idea of going one way, or was that not you?
That was my idea.
Well, someone came up with it, maybe it was Tom. Do you recall that?
Yeah.
Or no, you had a different idea for something else. I'm sorry.
Actually, Chief Jensen had talked to both property owners and...
That was another subject matter.
Given the nature of the parking lot and everything, then nobody wanted to give up that last spot.
Right.
So in order to perhaps facilitate safety there, that one way would be, one alternative Given the nature of the parking lot and everything, then nobody wanted to give up that last spot, so in order to perhaps facilitate safety there, that one way would be, one alternative would do that, so that was the recommendation that we made to come to.
It was a two-part discussion.
Have we notified any of the folks that live in this area?
Uh, no, not to my knowledge.
No, it's more of a, it was, we, Marty didn't do that, no, we didn't suggest for Marty to do that.
I'm just thinking of, I've been in that, I've driven down there, and I, of course, I have a taller car, but I didn't see any problem with the car parked there, coming up to that street, I mean, if you're gonna enter that way, you slow down before you get to a sidewalk, in my opinion, but, you know, we wanna make sure there's public safety there, but you've got, what, four or five garages that have to go around, I think we need to talk to those folks, I don't know if there's anybody here tonight who lives in that area that would be concerned about that, but I think before we make an alley a one-way, we should at least send out a notice that they have some input into it, but that's my thought on it.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, I totally agree, so if we wanna either table it and wait till we talk to them, that's totally fine, we were just moving quick, and Rich wasn't there, and we figured we'd just bring it to council for more general discussion, so.
Any other comments, or Mary?
No, I don't mind postponing it until, till letters go out, it was, it was, yeah, I don't mind postponing it till letters go out.
I believe, and I've got pictures of my truck just at, yeah, the driver's window, you're at bumper height, and when all the cars are parked there, and, you know, there had been a near miss between one of our public utility workers and, and a person on a skateboard, so, so there's, they've been asked to go the other way, which is fine, however, you know, this could be permanently solved by.
Wasn't our, weren't our employees instructed not to go out that way and go out the other way?
The original, the original situation was that we would have the city trucks, our city employees, take it as a one-way.
Right.
And then John had requested and made a, you know, we were discussing it and thought, well, maybe we should just be, we'll just continue that all the way through with traffic as well, just to be proactive, but I have no problem sending letters out to the residents there first, before we make that change, if we make that change.
I think we should at least hear from them.
Yeah, that's fine.
Good idea.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to postpone till the next meeting, and have letters prepared to be sent out to, by police chief and Melanie, yeah.
Everybody doesn't assume someone else is.
Nope, by our police department, police chief, and.
I think the chief said he was willing to do that.
Yep, have letters be sent out.
I think it's important.
So they can come give input at the next council meeting.
Maybe we should do that at Public Safety.
What, input at Public Safety?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure, if we can get the letters out in time, sure.
Okay.
Okay. Did you make that motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
So that probably won't be until April then, right?
Right.
If you're waiting to, okay.
Yep.
The first meeting after your meeting.
Yes.
That is, okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, new business, discussion, possible action on ordinance three dash fourteen, amendments to City of Hudson zoning code, chapter two fifty-five, in regard to breweries, brew pubs, wineries, manufacturers, distilleries, in the B three central business district, B two general business district, I one light industrial district, and the I one general industrial. Mr. Donald.
You can suspend the rules tonight and act on it, or, or you can have first reading, or as Mr. Sullivan suggested in the public hearing comment period, you could refer it back to Plan Commission. Catherine's got any comments or not in regards to, to the issue?
Well, just a couple of things, housekeeping, if, on the ordinance, there's a couple of just housekeeping changes that need to be made in that chart on page three, under B three, it should be termed central business district.
Which page is that?
Page three.
Three?
The chart in section C.
Okay.
And then in D, the brew, in that chart, the brew pub is not part of the heading, that should be dropped down, it's one of the things listed, but there is no under production area, it will say not applicable, and tasting room area not applicable, so those area restrictions do not apply in the.
Oh, yeah.
To the brew pubs, the chart just got messed up a little bit. Basically, what this does is what the Plan Commission directed, it, as you can see, for the various different types of establishments, they either need a CUP, or a conditional use permit, or a certificate of compliance. We did, as directed by the council at the last meeting, create a definition for the brewery off-site retail outlet, and that is allowed in the general business and the central business zoning classification with a conditional use permit. The brewery manufacturing facility is not allowed, except in the light industrial and general industrial with a certificate of compliance. Oh, and this is just housekeeping, a couple capitalizations on page four, but what we did add, if you recall at the last meeting, and at Plan Commission, we discussed that for some of these facilities that are issued a permit, for example brewery and winery, the state hours laws don't apply to those, because the statutes are written in such a way that they apply to the various liquor licensed establishments. And so I did communicate with the Division of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms that regulates, and we did put in conditions for, where we could, for those types of operations that have a permit only, and aren't subject to the hours, that they would be subject to the same types of hours that apply to the same type of thing they're doing. For example, a brewery can sale, sell for on-premise or off-premise consumption beer that's manufactured on the premises, but there are no hours requirements under current state law. Under our, the city zoning ordinance, we are saying they would have to comply with the same hours that either an off-sale beer licensee or an on-sale beer licensee would have to comply with. And I put that in the ordinance, and I did run that past the alcohol division, and they said with respect to hours, since the permit statutes are silent, the city can have, can adopt those restrictions. So we, we did, and that, that was one of the concerns Plan Commission raised and the council raised. The others regarding operators license, you can't, they, those aren't required for these permit brewery, for example, and winery, there's no requirement that they have servers who are licensed, but the city cannot adopt that restriction, because that would conflict with state law. So what we tried to do is make them consistent, so they're operating on the same playing field where we could.
When was the last time we had this, was that two weeks ago?
Um.
Three weeks ago, we talked about this?
Last council meeting.
Last, two months?
No, it was February.
It was planned in commission, wasn't it?
We had, we had the public hearing process of.
Two notices.
Two, two meetings ago?
Yes.
Two meetings at least, yeah.
Have you heard, did you get any phone calls from Mr. O'Sullivan that, in regard to this ordinance, or?
I did not personally.
Did you get any calls from Mr. O'Sullivan?
Didn't.
Okay.
Oh, and just to respond to the severability, we put that in nearly all our ordinances, it's just standard, so that if there's any part of this ordinance that were to be found invalid, it doesn't render the entire ordinance invalid, it's, it's standard procedure, it's actually part of our city code.
So the idea that we're not willing to listen to anyone, I, I take some exception to Mr. O'Sullivan's comment that we're not available, or we don't listen to anyone, there was plenty of time to make a phone call or an email, I didn't receive anything either, our city.
No, I was gone today, so something came in today, I didn't see it.
Right, but I mean, for the whole two-week period, or you didn't receive any email, or set up a meeting or anything, okay.
We've had five, like, four Plan Commission meetings.
Correct. Okay. What's your pleasure, counsel?
What's the part that, it sounds like we've addressed a number of those, is, what I was interested is the amount of alcohol a brew pub can legally brew, or we're not concerned with that, or that's gone through?
I think that's a state.
Well, that's governed by the state, ten thousand gallons.
Ten thousand barrels.
Per barrels. Ten thousand barrels per calendar year.
Yeah, but it's limited, we're giving them limited square footage, not for the brew pubs in the central business district.
Yeah, I didn't see that either.
They're tied in with a restaurant, so it's.
Yeah, I mean, okay, I thought.
Neither the Stone Tap or Smiley Moose is a brew tap, or a brew pub.
Certainly not.
They're just, they're a restaurant bar.
But a brew pub, under this ordinance, could come in and produce ten thousand barrels.
Correct.
Per year, and is there a limit on square footage?
Yes.
No, not under this, not on a brew pub.
But they have to have a restaurant. But they're required to have a restaurant.
They are required to have a restaurant, they are required to have a license from the municipality, a class B beer for serving at their restaurant, so they will be.
Turn.
But there's also the conditions under H, which require, I mean, it is hard to quantify, so, but if it's more on the industrial scale than on a downtown commercial scale, that's what number one is trying to get at, that they've gotta show that they are going to be compatible with the downtown business district, if that's where they're trying to locate.
Right, I mean, I think you have to look at the scale of our downtown, too, it's gonna have to be, to brew, to brew that, I mean, it has to be a large, larger building, a larger set, we don't really have, unless you get rid of something that already exists, which is as possible.
Sure.
Something could change over, but it's minimal, it's, you know, you know what I'm saying? It's not.
I mean, you could have a square footage, I mean, I'm not saying, don't, that, it's not allowed, you could.
It could be anything over a certain square footage would have a conditional use permit, I mean, we could.
Well, any brew pub has to have a conditional use.
Yes, any brew pub has to have, yeah, it just, the limits on production area don't apply as proposed, but that's up to the council, if you want to restrict production area, you can do that.
Now, is a winery required to have a restaurant?
No.
No.
But they're governed by.
Have a square footage.
A square footage.
Yep.
So that could be fairly industrial.
But it's a limited amount of space, it's.
Three thousand square feet.
Not for, oh, a winery, yes, that's why the production area is designed to limit.
Three thousand square feet, just for the actual restaurant or whining area, but that doesn't include storage, but.
The production.
Yeah, the whole area that they can, yeah.
So the brew pub needs to get a conditional use permit.
Yes.
As does a winery, correct?
But it also needs a restaurant, so it's not like.
They all need conditional use permits.
Except the brewery and.
Light industrial general, it's.
I'm talking about the downtown, not the industrial area.
So we, so we can.
So you want a first reading, folks, or do you wanna, do you wanna suspend the rules and take, take it up tonight, that's, that's the question that, are you, if there's more questions, we're certainly willing to listen and ask for more questions.
The one question I.
Yep.
Go, please.
You know, as far as we're throwing in, or as, as long as we're throwing in conditional use permits on everyone, is there a reason why we would exclude a brewery out of it? I mean, what if it was a boutique brewery, like a boutique winery, it's in three thousand square feet, we're requiring a conditional use permit anyway, that needs to be compatible with. With the area.
Can I speak on that one?
Sure.
Because I was gonna say something about distilleries, which goes along with breweries, I, I still plan to vote no, because I don't wanna see distilleries in central business district, for the same reason why breweries shouldn't be down there, and it's they, they have a smell that they emit, they, you know, it's not something that I think is a downtown, that I feel is a downtown use, and maybe I don't have the right to dictate that, but that's how I feel. So, I think the brew, the reason why we omitted breweries at Plan Commission was because of various things like smell, and, you know.
Traffic.
The traffic, bringing in, you know, the truck traffic, and, so that's why, and that's why we kept it to industrial, but I feel that that would be the same case with distilleries, in my opinion, I think it's the same logic, so I still plan to vote no for that reason, that we're keeping distilleries in the downtown central business, if we just keep it industrial, I'm okay with the whole ordinance.
Can't relate to the smell, I guess I've never smelled a distillery that smelled, I've.
I'm talking about traffic, truck traffic and stuff still with.
But it's only three thousand square feet, that's a small, very small operation.
I don't care.
Have you been out to Forty-Fifth Parallel, for example?
I don't really care.
I got you, so.
Just how I feel on this one. I grew up Milwaukee, I've smelt enough of everything for that.
That's beer.
It's everything.
I mean, a potential compromise, Mr. Sullivan asked, have more opportunity input, could have first reading.
Yep.
And let him communicate with our city attorney for the next meeting, and possibly incorporate some, some of his comments.
Is there a motion for that, or what do you think?
Yeah, I'll move for that.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion on that, so we've got our first reading tonight, and then we'll, we're very much available to talk to any of the folks that wanna have input, we're here, everybody knows where we're at, so if you have input, give us a call. Any discussion, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and, next item, request for open space easement and temporary construction easement, normally part of lot three, block J, Williams addition, Williams parking lot, to accommodate construction for the addition to the building at four twenty-two Second Street, Spring Creek Dental, Good Trade Enterprises LLC, issue sheet is available.
The, after the common council approved the development plans for Spring Creek addition at four twenty-two Second Street, which is a building just half-block on the east side of Second Street, south of Walnut, next to the Williams Municipal Parking Lot, I was contacted by the archi, project architect, and they requested if the city would consider providing an open space easement to allow windows to be installed in the building, called back and then asked for their consideration, where the existing building can have the same thing. A lot of comments, so we, you know, Police Chief Marty Jensen, myself, Tom Zulley, Kathy, discussed a lot of issues in regards to the parking lot, to open space easement, a temporary construction easement, which was recommended by David Gray. After a lot of discussions, also including the attorneys on the side of Good Trade Enterprises, which is a property owner, these two easements were proposed, so one is an open space easement, just along the new, the building, the new addition, so it's forty-four foot, basically, if the city responds to the state reviewer, tells them that an open space easement's been approved, then they'll go ahead and approve the building plans for, with windows. If not, the building would have to be redesigned, or the windows taken out of the project, and by redesign, it'd have to be moved back five feet from the property line. The temporary construction easement essentially is to allow the, basically, the north, the strength, the length of the north prop, property line of the city parking lot to be used for temporary construction access, storage, so forth, that lot's only twenty-six feet wide, it's very limited as far as access to it, there are provisions that they would pay five dollars a day, which is a typical fee for stalls that are taken out of commission. The city would remove the parking meters and, and posts, so that they're not damaged, again, that cost would be billed to the owners, and then, last but not least, any pavement improvements that would need to be made due to construction would also be paid by the developer. Kathy is quite involved in drafting the two easements, so we're recommending approval of these two easements.
If I was, if I, if I understood it, that this is, can be changed, I mean, we can say, if, if something needed to go in in that property, we can say, you gotta take the windows out.
Yeah, we've got, the provision in there is, under paragraph four, that the city retains the right and authority to unilaterally terminate the open spaces.
And that discussion was, was initiated from the very first call, so, project architect and myself.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask anything about the five dollar per day parking stall fee, is that, is that in our city ordinance, that that's what we charge for removal of that?
That is policy.
It's a policy?
Yes.
So we can't change, we have to abide by that policy then?
Well, it's up to you, I, we put in what was policy.
I'm just saying this because if our ticket is seven dollars, I would think we would keep it unilateral with our tickets, as if it was being, a car was there all day, that's all I'm saying. But I'm not gonna say no to this if no one wants to do that, I'm just thinking the policy was made up, and we had picked tickets done, and maybe we didn't see that, that's all.
Well, the incentive here is rather be paying five dollars a day per parking stall, is to keep those stalls open.
Right, I understand that, that's why I'm not, I'm just suggesting that is something we should look at possibly.
Probably look at changing.
Because I'm, I'm thinking it was, to be consistent with, I'm thinking it was made five dollars to be consistent with, like, a ticket for an entire day, not that I'm gonna say no to this now, but.
Got you. Any other comments, questions? This is gonna be about a three-month period of time, Dan?
They are hoping to be done with the project by end of July, of course, you know, things happen, and so I think the, the temporary construction easement was written to go through September thirtieth, just in case.
It's when it's substantially complete, or September thirtieth, whichever comes first.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, any other discussion? Excuse me.
And are you taking both the easements, because if people have different opinions on them, then they should be done separately.
I think we've, you wanted both of them, correct?
Yeah, I mean, if.
Yep. Any other discussion, is it, is that okay with the second, that it was both?
That's, that works.
All right. There aren't any comments or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last item, or the last item on the general is discussion, on the agenda is discussion and possible action on ordinance four dash fourteen, ordinance amending chapter fifty-nine of the municipal code regarding residency requirements. the municipal code regarding residency requirements. Ordinance four dash fourteen, issue and ordinance, Mr. Willey.
Um, state law change in two thou, two thousand thirteen, which prohibits municipalities from any type of residency restrictions. In our current ordinance, there are specific, mainly management employees, that were required to live within this school district. We changed it a few years back. So that's part of this process, that we have to, um, abolish that, and the city does have the authority under the new law to establish a fifteen-mile radius from the city limits for emergency personnel. Now, I spoke to the mayor about it, and we're proposing that that be implemented for the personnel listed there. I realize we don't have any full-time fire department personnel right now, other than the chief, but I thought as long as we're putting it in here, let's put it in in the future, if that would ever change. Um, and there is an exception in there, we do have one of our employees that currently lives outside of the fifteen miles, and, but Catherine came up with a good point, we want to make sure that the people that are in now don't move out, so we're saying just, they have to, at the time of the ordinance, live outside the fifteen miles, so. So that, this is up for discussion, and...
Thoughts, comments? We're just kind of, we're changing our, to follow the state guy, or the state law, I guess, not, not recommendation, the state law.
No, it's fine, I think it's fine, as long as those who live outside are grandfathered in.
And I believe, I don't know if Kim is still back there.
Yep, she's still there.
There's just the one, correct?
I do, whatever, can I?
Sure, absolutely, come on up, Kim.
So obviously, my only concern, I know we got one paramedic that lives outside the area right now, but my only concern is, is usually an EMS, we don't have one job, we have two jobs. Um, there's obviously the chance that we could have another full-time medic come in, but if they live outside the fifteen mile, I, you know, I don't mean to say this rudely, but we don't pay them enough to move them here and relocate their family to bring them in. So if we have someone on staff right now, or, you know, is looking to move, and they do make a move, and now we want to move them up to full-time, we're not gonna be able to do that, even though they've got the experience, they've got all the qualifications, it's gonna limit who I can honestly bring in as a full-time medic. And I, if that's something that can be considered, I mean, I, like I said, EMS, we don't have one job, we have two jobs. I've got a bunch of, actually, I've got two medics right now, where this is their second full-time job. So I can't, I don't want to limit it for my, I guess my full-time paramedics, if possible, because I really could be limiting myself, and we could be jeopardizing someone that we could bring in.
And it's up to the council, the, the little bit of the difference with the paramedics is that they're here for twenty-four hours. But, what, if there's something you're interested in changing, you could change the verbiage to say, full-time employees or current, I mean, it, it's up to you how much you want to limit, you could say current part-time paramedics, but...
Are you worried about future hires too, though?
Yeah, I'm worried about future hires, and I, honestly, with, with our business, the further we can get away from our atmosphere, the better. People don't want to live in the same city that they're working in, in this business, because they want to get away from it, because it's, it's a stress reliever, it's huge. So to make them have to move here and then live in the, the city and the jurisdiction that they serve, and have to work in, and, you know, see the stuff that goes on, honestly, it's not good for them.
It's probably personal ties disconnect, too.
It is, and it's...
But we currently have three of the four.
Yep.
You know, and then, which is why, I wanted to make sure I put the exception in for the one we currently have.
Which is their choice.
So Kim, if we have an emergency, the, the response time to get, if we had to call in is, I guess that's one of the reasons for this, do you, do you feel that could be a, a limiting factor, or not?
We don't usually call in, if anyone's coming in, it's me.
Right.
We don't, I mean, no, I know what you're saying.
I'm saying if we have a major problem, you wouldn't call in extra paramedics?
We usually have enough staff in town that are able to cover.
I guess my question on that, what Kim is saying is that, we have full-time Minneapolis and St. Paul firefighters living right here in Hudson.
Sure.
So they obviously don't have that requirement.
Right.
And this is just, I threw this out to try to cover everybody that could be covering it, it's completely up to you.
We were just trying to update our, but...
Well, yeah, you don't have to have it at all.
And the fifteen mile is completely up to you.
You just can't have a residency requirement, which is what the city has right now.
So, so, we're trying to comply with state law, but we don't, if we don't, if we choose not to do this...
We don't have to address it.
Okay, if we choose not to address this, does it affect all of our public safety departments?
Correct.
So it's gonna affect our police as well?
Police have a contract.
Keep the positions listed, or...
That's why I'm asking for, if it's all of our public safety.
Right. So you want your chief, I don't want our chief of police living in Eden Prairie.
No, but that's what I'm asking, does it...
Well, no, I, that's just...
You can designate whoever you want.
Right.
No, I, I think chiefs are great, or, you know, that's fine, but my point was, full-time firefighter, full-time EMS.
Well, my concern goes with the police, I understand they're in a union, but if that changes by state law, for some reason, I mean...
Right now, the...
The state law allows you to establish a policy that says, full-time public safety emergency personnel are required to live within fifteen miles of the city limits.
You don't have to do it.
It doesn't require you to do that, it allows you...
We could eliminate full-time paramedics.
You can't require them to live in the city.
You cannot.
No, that's what the city has to change in its code. It could have nothing, or it could have any of these public safety emergency personnel.
So our EMS person is saying that, our, Kim is, chief is saying she doesn't really want to have the EMS, correct?
So drop full-time paramedics out of this, and we're, we're done.
And we're good.
We're good then.
Good, so it's all we have to do.
Everybody okay with that?
Cool.
Wait a minute, now, we gotta talk to Mr. Teewinkle here, he's...
Well, I guess I, I, and we don't have any full-time firefighters.
Firefighters.
But if we do, I think it could be the same thing as the paramedics.
Sure.
But then we're changing our entire fire department, right? Because we go to full-time.
And you could, you could implement it at that time.
Right, it, it's going to be a whole...
It's gonna be a whole, yeah.
Right, right.
But that's why I was asking about the police, not thinking about union contract, that's why I...
No, I, I'm, I'm good with chiefs, and actually, the, the sworn police officers also. So I, I would recommend we drop full-time paramedics out of the clause.
And drop fire personnel for now, and you can address that at the time.
Just, just, just drop full-time paramedics out of it.
Well, I made a motion to allow this, amend my motion to...
That would be fantastic, like I said, even for the chiefs, it's about a half hour before we can even get in, so I mean, to be even in the city if we're doing something.
The first time it's coming to the council, so if you want to adopt it tonight, you have to suspend the rules.
We could suspend the rules with those changes.
Yep.
Correct.
But we have to suspend the rules first.
But you didn't suspend.
Okay, I move to suspend the rules.
Okay.
Second.
Now is our motion.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, vote to suspend the rules.
Vanslo?
Yes.